Chief Alenda, please sit and pray. Father God, we want to thank you for us coming out here, Father. We ask, Father, that the Holy Spirit dwell within us, that we make decisions that are best for the city of Winford, Father, in our own name, in Jesus' name, pray now, Pastor Alenda.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kayka?
Present.
Lois Jordan?
Here.
Betty Johnson?
Here.
Craig Gill?
Here.
Rex McCarthy?
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a public comment. At this time, anyone who would like to make a comment pertaining to any item that is on the agenda may do so. You are limited to two minutes for your comments.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the farmer's market, flash Mr. Atkins, and an executive session to discuss the farmer's market and alleged misconduct by city employees.
Properly moved. Second. And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record reflect that it unanimously approved to amend the agenda. Are there any other public?
Can I say something now?
Yes.
I'm Alan Atkins. I'm a contractor for the farmer's market. Everybody here probably knows me. I've been submitting payments, and every payment's four to six weeks late. I pay all my subs on this job. I cannot communicate between the city and the state. B O S Q need to get together. B O S Q's hard to talk to. I come see y'all, I come over all the time. I just need some money. I'm not here to badmouth anybody. I paid that $225,000 building out of my pocket. Any other contractor would have threw a lien on it already. I just need somebody from the city to personally call and get something done with B O S Q, because I call them an engineer daily. We email daily to the city. I got three businesses here in the city. I want a good relationship. I don't want to file a lien on the thing. I just need some help. $225,000 hasn't broken me. I just need, I got four or five other jobs going. I can't do it all myself. I just need to get paid. I'm through with farmer's market. I just need to get paid, and every, I got it right here, every payment has been late. I just need some help. I'm gonna file a lien this week and get something done. Give me a high dollar attorney, pay him $20,000, sue the city, do whatever I gotta do, but I don't want to do it, because I gotta look at you every day, you know? I got businesses here. I want to be a cool dude. I just need some money. I just need some help with the city and B O S Q. He's a burger to talk to, everybody knows that. I just need some help. If I can't get any help, I'm gonna hire me a high dollar lawyer and do whatever I gotta do. That's all I got to say.
We do understand your position, and I'm on the phone with him almost daily. Today, I tried three times, and like you said, he's very hard to talk to, and we were just talking about the fact, this particular grant, the reimbursement, the timeframes for the reimbursement have been totally different than any of the other state grant returns that we've been dealing with. So, we are on it trying for you, but don't think that we're not. Like I said, today, three times I tried. I will again tomorrow. I also put it in writing in an email to him today to please give us an update or at least respond, because right now, we have the one outstanding $66,000, and then we have, that we're waiting for the reimbursement, and that's been weeks that we sent, since we sent them the request. And then we have the upcoming, I think, $54,000. But don't think that we're not on it. We are, but it's just, it's unusual that it is taking this long.
Yes, Mayor. My office spoke with Chris today, Chris Deniman. He said that he is constantly over, that he'd never ran up on a situation like this, and this is, this is money that the state had granted the city, you know, for this project. It never went in where the city was supposed to, but we've paid more than the amount that we were scheduled to pay already, and we're waiting, you know, to receive, you know, that money back from the state also.
On the previous payments, we waited so long that we finally just paid him.
That's right.
Paid him and waited for the money, still waiting for some of the money to come. These are bigger payments, so we do need the, we do need the money from the state. So, but I just don't want you to think that we're not trying.
It's just hurting me, you know?
I know it, I know it.
It's not anything against you. I got a low pro, I got about a $15,000 profit on that job. That's nothing. I done that job strictly for advertising, strictly. I can make $15,000 in the last two weeks. I just done that, because I live here, I want everybody to see my name.
Right.
Just done that, and I got about $3,500 in interest paying everybody. I just, I need some help. That's all I got to say. If I can't get any help, I got to, I gotta hire a attorney.
Who is Mr. S Q? I'm sorry, I don't know Bill S Q. What's his title and what's his function in this whole thing? He's administrative for funding for the governor's office.
Right.
Right. So, there's somebody above him, I would think, or at least perhaps somebody maybe from the city, or you, Ms. Atkins, contact the local legislators and try to get them to lean on this guy, if that's truly what the problem is. And we certainly have good relationships with legislators that could help you. Correct, we have not, we have not tried that. We have not gone to our legislators and asked them, but I just hadn't considered that. That might have stepped away.
Very, very. And I thought about calling Steve Powell, and I know him personally.
Yep.
I knew he'd help me, but I hate to get a favor from him, and I might be in jail one day and need a favor to get me out of there.
Yeah.
He and R S Q is super hard to talk to.
Have we received any payments?
Yeah.
How much, how much have we received, man?
I can tell you how much they are, so I have to do math.
Yeah, just roughly.
They owe him at this moment $66, because the final one is not allocated him yet. They owe us about $40,000.
Our own money?
Yeah.
Or we owe you?
$66,000 now, and money.
And we'll be $54,000.
Will be $54,000. So, we owe him about $100,000.
And then how much is left on the grant?
That, that exact amount?
Yes, $225,000, $225,000 job. They owe me a retainer, about $25,000 after that. It's just been late every time.
Why couldn't we get Steve to check on that? He's not, he's not an easy man to talk to.
He's not.
I'd ask people, I'm talking about get Steve Powell.
Neil Reiser.
Neil Reiser.
Right.
And I can understand your position, not why we do that.
I do.
But maybe a council member or the mayor could get a hold of Steve and Neil. But the money that's come in, we paid it out, Amanda. Amanda, the money that has come in, we paid it out.
We actually, it took so long that we paid him beforehand, before we received the money.
Okay.
We paid him upfront on those, because it was taking such a long time. So, and these are bigger, and then we have another one coming up, $54,000. But I would say, easy, this is taking quadruple the time to get a return that it normally does.
Peter, you.
With the other state grants.
Are y'all having that kind of problem on y'all's project?
Uh-uh.
With the government grant?
We, we don't have any projects involved with this.
No, no, not on this.
I, I, yes, sir, we don't have any current projects.
Okay, that's involving.
You know, we have other things, we have the L G A P grant, we have other things that we're receiving timely reimbursements on.
But this one you.
But this one is not. And they have, all have different administrators.
Yeah, I do not want to file a lien. I might have to look at y'all every day. I'm gonna come up there, beg and help me out, y'all helping me out with a little sewer deal going across there. I appreciate that.
And I think, if I understand some of the situation, is the lack of communication between y'all, you, and the mayor's office, is that not correct?
Between the city and the state. We just gotta get two people.
I don't think there's really a lack of communication. We are attempting, both by phone calls and emails, we're not getting a lot of response from the state of this. And I think it does boil down to the administration. Because it differs so much.
It mostly rests with the gentleman, what's the sign, or it's.
Well, that, that's where most of the problem is. I mean, if the city can't get him to do anything with it, it's no fault, I mean, you know, I know you want the money, we want you to have it.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not going to be safe playing any game.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm a pretty cool dude this week, but next week, I probably.
Oh, I understand.
That's all I got to say, thank you.
We have not, we have not gone to our legislative, but we will, we will begin that process immediately. This week, Mayor. Was that what you're gonna take up, one of the things you're gonna take up? Okay. We'll move to item number two, approval to July 29th. So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, record so reflect. Okay. We've completed our public hearing on item number three, the adoption of ordinance number 1,000, final amendments for the year 2016, '17 operation budget.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to read a section of Larson Act. It says, "In a Larson Act municipality, if there is a tie vote by the Board of Aldermen concerning the adoption or amendment of an ordinance, the mayor cannot cast the tie-breaking vote." As the clear language of Louisiana Revised Statute 33-406A1 requires the affirmative vote of a majority of the Aldermen, if this is, if there is a tie vote concerning the adoption of a resolution, and if the tie is a result of the members' absentee, absenteeation, the mayor cannot cast a tie vote, as this is not an equal division of the members present, but rather an equal division of the members' vote. So, last meeting in which these ordinances were introduced.
Okay, I reviewed that at a request of a council member, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, it was just introduced at the last meeting, which really doesn't require any type of blessing. Any member can introduce an ordinance or resolution. You're right on that, if it, we were voting to adopt it, if it, Mayor, I researched, if it was tied, for instance, Rex was gone last week, if he wasn't here tonight, Mayor, you can't break a tie on an ordinance.
Right.
But you can break a tie on a resolution.
Okay.
And that's the law, but the introduction doesn't have to have a motion second. Historically, we've always done it so that everybody will be aware of what's going on. Now, it is important that it be advertised that it's gonna be taken up this meeting, and that the notice of the public hearing, that's to give the public the notice to be here. And I'm assuming that it was not advertised?
What?
Amanda did.
Please, was it advertised? The public hearing?
Well, the public.
I was under the impression it was. Is Marcy saying no, Casey?
I guess it wasn't. I thought I sent it to Marcy.
Well, what it needs to be then, Mayor, it needs to be, this vote needs to be continued till either a special meeting or the next meeting, whichever, and it needs, at least the caption of the ordinance needs to be advertised, as well as we need to have, I assume, another public hearing on these two ordinance.
Okay.
And that, that should clarify the law, Mayor. But again, the introduction doesn't have to be. We could introduce something tonight, and it would be taken up in 30 days.
So, no action is really needed on an introduction by council?
No.
Okay.
No, no, that's attorney general's opinion. We've been doing it, really, I've never looked that up, you know, because there's never been a question on that. But it's an attorney general's opinion is what it is. It's not in the law.
Yep.
And again, if a member abstained, like tonight, let's just say, we had a resolution come before the council tonight, Rex abstained, 2-2. The mayor can break that tie on the resolution, but he can't break the tie on an ordinance. And if, if you abstain, that's the same as a no vote, if, for an ordinance, if it's concerned. That's, that's the rule on that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna get y'all out of the most recent handbook, I'm gonna email it to you, to the five council members, and to you, Mayor. Doing this research, I found one, it's up to date through January of this year, and I'll, I'll email it to everybody, and it tells you about that.
Are you talking about the Larson Act?
What's the Larson Act, but it's, it's put, you may have it, but it's put out.
I printed this off, wondering if I was starting to connect.
There's a couple of them out there, and this is a handbook put out by, I think Attorney General's Office, maybe L M A, but I'll, I'll email it to all the council members, and the mayor.
I'd also be interested in looking at the position of.
What's that?
I'd be interested in looking at the position where it doesn't require council permission to, on department heads. I was told that the law was changed.
Oh, the department head?
Yeah, that it required, department heads require council approval. I was told that.
Yeah.
That it changed, that the law changed, but I didn't.
And it, most recent, Kay, at 4:00 now?
I was told that with, who was the last one you hired there?
Sam.
Craig. Not you, Sam. Alice said that it was not, that it didn't require council approval.
Well, she's wrong. We always approve.
Well, let me check it, because, again, I don't attend every seminar, I don't read every single law that comes out, but, but I can check that for y'all.
Will you please?
Have no problem, and if there's a question, again, any council member can call L M A for a real quick answer. If I'm not.
I just ran across some stuff when I was looking at that, that was to the contrary, so I thought I was gonna ask about that.
Well, I think that law states certain ones, and then says other, other heads, certain heads, so, again, it may be what's been established by Winford, I don't know, by ordinance, I don't know. I don't know everything, there's a lot of law out there, but we, I'll check that for you. Okay, Mayor. So, we're gonna, we're gonna just continue.
Okay.
And then advertise it.
Okay. So, that's gonna be the same on three, on three and four?
Yeah. And it was not advertised on.
I'm pretty sure. I'm sure we didn't get a legal note. We had minutes, minutes were submitted for, you know, for the past month or so, but I don't believe there was a notice of a public hearing in with that information.
Yeah. I'll take it.
Okay. I remember, I guess, before we go on the report, or we want to go to the report, before we go into the executive section? Let's go ahead and go to the report. Katie LeBrandt is not here tonight, so we'll move to item number six. Mayor Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be relatively short tonight. The water main relocation project, we are substantially completed with that. That includes three streets, Mason, Tensaw, and Brown. We also added in an emergency situation, a service main replacement underneath Highway 130 there in section 15. I'm sure y'all probably, probably saw that. It was leaky, there was a leak on a service main that, that had been going for quite some time. But that project is substantially complete. I made a write, there might be one or two items left on the punch list, but for the most part, all items have been completed. The 2017 street improvements project, the notice received date was last Monday, the 14th. The contractor did move, start moving last Thursday, they started doing some of the pavement patching, so you're seeing diamond construction in and around towns, and they will be continuing on through. We anticipate the majority of the work to be finished prior to the next council meeting, pending weather, but they do have a 90-day contract time that started on August 14th. The last item on the, on the sheet here is the C W G lift station improvements. That is in the design phase currently. We anticipate completing plan and specifications prior to the next council meeting for submission to C W G and D H H for a permit. Do y'all have any questions on any of those items, or anything else we might be doing throughout the season?
Make a motion to accept Meyer and Meyer reporters to the.
Properly moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record reflect that it's unanimously approved.
Thank y'all.
Item number seven, airport manager's report. Airport manager went to Tennessee to observe the.
Eclipse.
Eclipse. Item number eight, public work.
Good evening. August was unusual, wet month, our mow crews are still mowing, and our street crews are still picking up limbs and debris, and the last two weeks, they've been cutting overhead limbs, cause of school starting for the buses. They working on that. And last week, we had CPR classes for the city employees, and we, oh, thanks to the fire chief, he was the instructor, and did a good job on instructing the classes. And that concludes my report.
Couple things, the lights at the tennis court, how's that coming along?
Okay, I've got prices on the lights, and I turned it in to Amanda for the installation price, and she's making sure all the prices are what I come up with, and then we'll address it.
And we've talked to Ann, Ann, Ann McIntyre, and updated her on the situation, so we should be ready to order fairly soon. But it's, one company will, will purchase the lights from, another will do the installation. It's not something we can do ourselves, because of.
Because of what?
Because they have to, what the lights attached to was, was the proper word?
Bow.
The, was, the parts that the lights are attached to.
Oh, the, the arm?
Yeah, right. So, the arm.
Yeah, they, they've got to have a scissor lift to do that.
And they'll come and do it all. Watch saw electrical to do that.
And we didn't want to tell Ann nothing just yet, because she wanted to get some support money before she asked, she wanted to know what the city was gonna do first, you know, after we talked about it.
About $14,000 total.
Yeah, close to $14,000, $15,000. So, you divide that by half, she is gonna come up with the other half.
For lights? She play tennis here today.
Well, it's all, it's all new lights, the LED lights.
Yeah.
And the old ones is not, they burn more electricity, and they attract bugs. The LED lights don't attract the bugs, and they burn less electricity, and they last a whole lot longer.
The light, the light bulb is much longer. So, it's the light, the fixture, and the labor for that price.
Secondly, Craig, and I'm getting calls about cemetery out on Robinson Road.
Right.
Grass is pretty high in back of the road out there, and it's higher than my sister's.
They started today.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
I saw, I saw, I know they did some work done.
They finished the one uptown, they started on the one out, out on one Robinson Road today.
Good. Let them know.
Okay.
Perfect, thanks.
I have a question. So, talking about the lights that's going up, so when they need changing, then you have to call the company back, or do we have people here that can do it?
We don't have the scaffolding. We don't have the lift, we'd have to rent a lift to change them. We could probably change just the bowl, that's no problem, but every time we do, we'd have to rent a lift. What we'd probably do is, when you get enough to go out, then change several bulbs to benefit you rent the scissor lift.
Should those LEDs?
LEDs should last 10 years, no more than a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, you have to put them up, I didn't know if they had to come back and change them.
Yeah, it should be a long time before you have to change one, but you don't ever know, but, you know.
That's right.
Okay.
I'd like, the light, can we get those at our street lights? Those light bulbs would just drop in half, they were papered.
And we had a question to ask Anna. You're right, though.
Jordan. Look, we put LED lights in our house. It ain't even funny of the difference it makes. It does.
What is your pleasure on the?
I make a motion to accept those, the public works report. I second it.
Properly moved and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record reflect that it unanimously approved. Code enforcement officers want to report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, I've been working with the city attorney on, I have 17 houses to condemn. I started the first process last week on condemning these homes. Sent the first letters out. Out of 17 homes, I've had three respond, saying they're gonna take care of theirs, their own. So, that leaves me a few that haven't responded yet. So, I'm getting ready to do the second round of letters, which is gonna schedule a meeting for the next council meeting in September, for them to present themselves to either give us permission, legal permission to take the house in ourselves, or they're gonna give us, we're gonna give them a chance to remodel their house, repair the home, make it up to Louisiana code standard. But, other than that right there, that's all, the only thing I'm dealing with pressing right now is on these houses. I've been needing a lot of lots being overgrown in the city. I sent out another round of letters on that, for any owners that own lots and their yards being overgrown, I've been putting a lot of letters out there, having the owners take care of their lots. The only thing I have at this moment, or the main thing, is getting these homes taken care of, because there's a lot of criminal activity going on, and they're rude, they're paving in, they're rat infested, it's time to, time to get them out of the town, make it more presentable. I don't get it.
Two, two questions.
Yes, sir.
I got a property that's on, on First Street, that's the last house on the left-hand side, you turn there.
Yes, sir.
The owner, the move with her daughter, and the grass has been up this whole summer. Snakes being in the carport over there, and she lives right there, and we, we need to do something about that, to get them mowed. So, I don't know if we eyed it and saw that, but that's been the way the, the whole summer, she had mowed the whole summer.
Yes, sir.
The second deal that I, I see a lot of, that's, that's caused a big problem, is these old vehicles. They're popping up, popping up, more and more. Are we hitting these vehicles, getting, get these vehicles out, so we tag them?
Only problem I'm coming up with the vehicle moving is, like when I was city inspector down south, we have tow companies there that could, we send a letter out, we tag that vehicle, they do not do anything with that vehicle in 10 days, we have a tow company take that vehicle out the yard and push it back, or they receive a ticket for it. The problem running into here in the town is, we have no one here that have a tow vehicle. I've tried Murphy's, I've tried Doug's, they don't have wrecking yards out here. The closest thing they have is Monroe. The cost it would take for a wrecking company here to take that vehicle and haul it to Monroe, it's not even worth the money in value on scrap. So I'm trying to come up with other options on how to get these cars, that is on my agenda too.
Have we ticketed anybody?
I've tagged a few cars, and they moved those.
The reason I say that is because right where I'm at, there's a ton of them, they're popping up on Pope Street right there. There's a house that's been there for a minute, and they are constantly... Because I said, my sister, even though my own sister, I had to move her car, she finally moved it after we tagged it, but I said, you get a ticket, you get a ticket. But one deal's with the children's safety, getting in them vehicles, two is the mosquitoes, next to snakes, and like I said, you have a lot of them on there, and they're just, they're just stacking them up. That's the big thing that's happening now. I know we're getting houses, but now the cars are taking them.
Right. Like I said, that's on my agenda also, but that's also a legal process you have to go through. You just can't go there and take the cars from them. Tag them first, and we'll give them a chance to move their own car out there. And I do have that on my agenda to start working after this week.
How long do we give them to move their car?
10 days.
They got 10 days?
A minimum of 10 days.
And I think there's a, if you can bring a criminal action against them in city court, why don't you check with me on that?
Yes, sir.
Because that'll get it done. I mean, if they go before Judge Sartor, and he, you know, he's gonna find them properly, and he's gonna give them so many days to move it, and if they don't, then he's gonna find them again. So maybe, I'm thinking it's a criminal statute, I just need to check that. Things like this are on there, seem like we had some moved a few years back.
That was criminal charges placed on Maple Street.
And had them move them, or?
That had junkyard.
Yeah. Let's check that out.
Yes, sir.
And then the last deal right here, I know we hitting the houses, like I said, the cars, what about the littering, the littering, the littering? We got, I know we was on one that was open down Gum Street, but we got a couple that as I was driving around through the city, I mean, they just created their own dumping spots, that I'm seeing on these tire refrigerators, all this kind of stuff, the lumber. There's a home, have we, I talked to you about it at the council, but seeing all these boards and all, like this littering, all this trash that we got, you know, that they're just putting stuff out there, just stacking it up.
We've got to stash it on that.
I personally ride around every day, almost throughout the entire city, and I've been stopping and speaking to people, last week I had a couple incidents like that, and I've had the homeowner that brought the trash out, they actually come get a trailer, he get their own trailer and haul it out of that road dump site. That's another thing, it's hard to, it starts a confrontation when you try to tell them, you know, we can't take it, but the city, I noticed that the city garbage, we saw Delta ladies, they've been taking, trying to get a lot of stuff up themselves too.
But we can file criminals, we have gone and pushed other entities in court.
Yes, sir.
Because we have audits with that, so they have no choice, it's normal.
Exactly.
And I'd like to point out that compliance officer met with me, we probably met for a couple hours one day and went over all the procedures on condemnation proceedings. And I just want to remind the council, it's a long process. You got this first 10-day notice, and then you got to notify them that we're having a hearing at the council meeting. And some of y'all, I think, gone through a round of them, and it's constantly bringing them back, giving them an opportunity to fix it, and if they don't, last resort is, we tear it down and we put a lien against their property for the cost of removal. But it, but to tell y'all, it's probably, I'd say, probably a 60 to 90-day process.
After, after every... Every now and then we went to a street, we went down, yes, we was like, what, $20,000, $30,000? We went through a hoes, and we had to come and pour and tear them down.
How long you think the process lasts from start to finish?
About 60 days.
And in the meantime, you can be getting some other houses going.
Right.
And once we kind of get them going...
Then we're doing them a while.
Yeah, yeah, but it takes a little while to start the process and get it moving.
Well, I'm with Rex on these cars.
With cars, we'll check in after.
I get what you're asking.
But the main thing of it is, it has to be fully needed. It cannot, you can't have, it's gotta be done to the T. Every piece of paperwork has to be filed correctly, and that's the steps I'm taking right now. And everything has its so many days' process to go through. So within the next 60 days, all these houses that the owners do not take care of themselves, we will take care of.
We always hear, once you get one, it started down to a thing. They'll start moving, you just gotta set an example.
That's exactly.
They said that with one, and I've seen it, that the whole group started moving.
And you know that's right?
They just find the first one, they help start moving them.
And one other, one final thing with the vehicles, that is one thing I have been working on a lot, and the hardest thing is just trying to get a tow company to get them out of the yards. So that's what I'd like to get with Mr. Tab, to see what other options are with the report.
Let's try the...
You know, what other legal procedures we could take towards.
Yeah, let's try the...
There's quite a few that has to go.
Let's try the criminal approach first.
Yes, sir.
Without spending the money for tow trucks.
Exactly.
Because you tie up a bunch of money on there, you got to go out and stay on the ground.
Okay. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the code enforcement monthly report.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that it is unanimously approved. Fire chief, monthly report.
You out there, everybody? We had two house fires, one vehicle fire, two rescues this month, two fire alarms. We installed smoke detectors for residences, and four false alarms, for a total of 18 calls for the month. That's all I have to say right now.
I make a motion to accept the fire chief's report.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that it is unanimously approved. Police chief, monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the month of 17, 17 to 8, 2017, criminal charges 44 for the year 321, traffic charge of 113 for the year 745, highway accidents 25, parking lots 29, total of accidents 34, and calls for service for 500.
I move and we accept the chief's report.
Properly moved. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that it is unanimously approved. Humane officers, monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor. Number dog foster for the month 1, 39th of the year, transport to Monroe 3, 3 for the year, deceased a die, one in the bed office, five for the year, picked up 13 new dogs, 88 for the year. Total care for 37, 450 pounds of dog food, 3,100 for the year. Total number dog in the pen 32, total ambulance in the pen 32, missing 86, total call 88, dead animals 20.
Russell, with our audits, if we got a dog that's, they got a dog that's chained up, they got the dogs supposed to be on slabs, correct?
On slab, before they're on slab, in the fence.
Mm-hmm. I'm seeing, and this is concerning me right here, and I was gonna take this up last month, I'm seeing a lot of dogs that people are putting around in the community, and these are aggressive dogs. One, they're not on slabs. Two is, the barriers that they got, the barriers are not stable, and they got them chained, but you got too many children that's playing around these deals with these aggressive dogs, that I think, we hadn't had a situation happen yet, but I think that is an accident waiting to happen. But we got a ton of them, and I'm seeing, they just bringing dogs in, they on dirt, fences they got, got gaps in it, that dog breaks that chain, these kids is through it. And so I think that, you know, I know you're doing your deal what you're supposed to do, but it's just too many of these aggressive dogs. And second, I'm seeing again, they're walking aggressive dogs, no mussels.
Right.
These dogs still in the community, they're just walking, you know? And so again, this summer with all these children out, you're seeing babies, I got grandkids, you're seeing these kids, and again, I think that is, you've been blessed, but I think again, that's an accident waiting to happen. And going back, like I said, again, with the code enforcer, I think we still gotta set an example, one, to get the rest of them right, but like I said, it's just a ton, and I see them just setting up pins, pins popping up, that we, I know over in our area, that we didn't have them, now we got them popped up, and again, they're just on dirt, and how they gonna put the fence of it, you count it around, that's gone down.
So they got the fence up, and the dog on the chain, what you saying?
Yeah, no slab, dog not on a slab, couple not on slab.
Right.
Well, they're not supposed to be chained, are they?
They're not supposed to be chained.
They're not supposed to be chained.
They're chained with, they're inside, they're inside the fence, but it's saying they're going exponentially.
They're inside a fence that got gaps in them like this, like staying, a kid, if a kid even want to get to the dog, they can go through lions. And then they got them on chains, with these old chains, still, again, these aggressive dogs, that you look at, anytime here, they got stakes that can snap. You know what I'm talking about? Because when the kids come by the fence, the dogs get all up on the chain, and it's just like, say, you know, on that time, at one time, and these through a fence.
I get what you're asking, I get to add this, and I'll check on it.
Do we have, we got everything up to code out there for y'all?
Yeah, we got, we got some pins we need to fix, we got a drainage problem, which has been happening, you know, lately, so we're gonna blow it out and put something in, and if that don't work, we probably have to rebig it up, you know, put a nut in there on our drains, but we got some pins we fixing on, we got some old tread we might order, or we might go with the bows for our feeders. We got like 13 of those we got to get, so either we gonna get that, or we gonna just put bows in it and cover the holes up.
Mr. Grant.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kim called me, well, we talked today, and she said they had been down to the pound, and I have a list here of things, she said they needed, that needed to be repaired.
Yes, we're making repairs.
Okay, and I give you, I told her, I give you a copy of this.
Okay.
And that way, you can see on the tablet.
Yeah, we got some repairs, we're working on that.
And the bad parts, yeah, said it's a bad, it's a bad design for cleaning in the back, on the back, the back.
On the dip part.
Yeah, well, do you, that's what's stopping them.
Okay.
Yeah. So we working on that, we're gonna blow that out, get them blowed it out, try to, might put some kind of drain in there, see if they clean up, and if they don't, probably have to get a bigger pipe and rerun it.
Okay, thank you.
I went out there with Kim the other day, I didn't be able to walk around, see, but, and we were on the back, I was appalled at the amount of grass that's out there. Don't you have trustees that work out there?
On the outside of? On the outside?
Like between the fence of the first slab and the second slab, there was really, really high grass in there.
Okay, I checked, they caved back there, but I checked.
Yeah, just, I guess I was expecting it to be a lot better than it was. I mean, I know we have problems out there, structural problems on that, but out of everything, that disappointed me the most, because that's something that a push mower or a weed hater can take care of, and then there were dogs out there on chains, and that was a little... There were two dogs out there that was on...
Yeah, they're inside the fence.
Yeah, inside the fence, but they were...
No, I'm talking...
No, not inside the fence, they were chained to the back.
I understand.
We never went inside the fence.
They're inside the fence now. We pick them up, and we transfer those, we put them inside. But there's so many, we've been picking up. We are finna give Ms. Kim another list of dogs that need to go, we live behind, so we can get them out, make sure we put some more in.
So why don't we those dogs chained?
The pins got full, he picked those two up, and we transferred three, those three we transferred, the only one that bit the young lady, and we got to put inside the fence.
I was going, it's funny.
See, that was last month.
They were all over, Kim, I mean, we walked around the fence.
No, 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 not those.
Okay.
No, they don't walk, they haven't been walking these.
We were outside around the fence. We thought it was anybody, thought they were gonna lick me to death.
I saw the two you was talking about, I know it wasn't on them, just some of them inside the pin.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the report. Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Let the record reflect that it is unanimously approved. The community center monthly report, anyone have that report?
I do. Hey, I have the report for the community center. There was only one event during the month of July, and that's all for the month of July and for this report.
I'll make a motion to accept that. Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Motion to go into executive section?
I'll make that motion.
Let's go ahead on the movement, let's go ahead on, get that monthly financing before that, right? On executive session, so we come out of executive session, then we're gonna be in charge.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion to table that, that the finances for the month of July, and the question that I gotta ask is, we were set up to get the monthly finances on Wednesday, but we done gone two months back to back. I got it Friday night. What is the problem that's causing us to be able to get them later?
On this particular week, on Wednesday at the time of distribution, I discovered that there were some entries from the payroll taxes that were not completed, that needed to be corrected, and we could not send it out like that. So we had a choice between send it out, I mean, I think you should definitely get it when you want it and all the information you need, but couldn't send it incorrect.
The reason that getting it on Wednesday, if the council goes through it Wednesday night, they can call while City Hall is still open Thursday.
Absolutely, I agree. I mean, I have no problem with even the Monday before that, but in this particular case, it was accuracy, we had, if we had sent it to you on Wednesday, it wouldn't have been accurate, and which would be fraudulent on our part, knowing, knowing that it needs to be corrected. We just had to send it, fix it, and send it. That was the delay on that.
So hopefully we can get that, because like I said, my concern wasn't back to back. We done gone, and that's gonna push two special call meetings back to back on the same issue of the finances. Like I said, we've been getting them, you know, I know things happen, you know?
Yeah.
Like I said, and I know we've been dealing with that for a minute, that's been the biggest thing with the council, again, we're not getting them on Wednesday, when we supposed to get them, or summer, get them, all won't get them, and like I said, that's been a problem, we just keep us daiming with these finances. So hopefully we can get that rectified, and we can get them on Wednesday.
And that's our goal, to give you what you want, when you want it, because that's what you make your decisions on, and I totally agree with that, which I couldn't send it to you wrong. You know, those corrections have to be made.
I'll take a motion to table.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Motion to go into executive section? All in favor, say aye. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion we come out of executive session. Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. I'd also like to make a motion with Jerk. All in favor, say aye.